A learning experience.
For sure.
Yeah, for sure. Always fun.
Oh, Mr. Dan.
How's it going this morning?
Hey, I'm just doing fine. How are you this morning?
Good.
Well, I will let you guys do your thing. I'll go sit with my compatriots back here.
Yes.
I just come out this morning.
Feeling?
Which one did she get?
Um. Oh, oh. Fantastic. Better than the dreaming one. And then I got some.
You have two things?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
So I have to look. I didn't look. Wait, was it? Well, just they did tear apart the back, but I did go in and take.
Oh.
Because I'm sorry. Hey, that works. Look, that's interesting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We can see that.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
It's whatever.
Good.
That I thought she called me. Thank you. It's on my address.
That's supposed to come in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I've been sitting under the.
I did.
Me too. I go to screen. Well, that's not bad. And he came.
I think it's getting rain down by.
I have a ticket to match. Yeah. It's like.
Yeah, it's raining from a. So.
Like ball girls going.
Three. Little. You really look like we were getting more. We were.
Morning.
Just.
It's dry in there.
Yeah.
I don't. Say I'm gonna close. Yes.
Some. I just asked her question. Stay like.
Plunge grassy. I say so well. I'm shocked when I plant the last Sunday. He's green. He is.
Oh, it's worse. I'll be right.
I don't know.
Never worked.
That's amazing.
I don't. The straw.
Well, I use the straw and I don't want to say anything. This is. I think that's a big difference. Yeah. Four seventy-five bucks. Because.
Oh, that's time.
I'm honored.
They stopped. Wait.
I'm going to sleep. Down the street over here, pick it up. Yeah. I might as well. So.
It's expensive. Yeah. Those are terrible.
Time to wait. Well, we're dead here.
I was impressed. Taking the stuff I have. Just. And now sleeping on the show.
Yeah. He's had this. This is very nice. Really? What? But. Yes. You just put my. I said, so what do you?
But I'm trying to be better.
My wife. Last year. The wood. That's great. That's not a milk.
I just. All of them are up in the closet. It's a.
Well, I'm. I'm still learning.
Then you're like a. It's really a winner.
I'm. I get that nuts. I just.
You have to be.
Because they all. Just.
I don't know. It hasn't really changed.
Go back just.
The long.
But I. Right now, I've got.
My ass. About. We could just.
They're coming up on Friday. To be like. That's the day.
That's weird. So funny.
I hate.
One is running.
I just gotta.
Dog. I don't know. It's green. It's like a little. Spring. Losing balance.
But I should take.
It's. Long. Always house.
It's called keto.
It's just. Turn yellow and it's.
Oh.
Probably a color.
And it makes.
None of it. Never.
And I have one of those apples too. About one. Red.
He has such a good coffee.
That is. It's too.
That's what I was.
Yeah. And all. As I'm. It's all three. Maple tree.
I mean, I used. Just. No.
I don't trust the same kind. You know, I would think it's like spaghetti squash. See if a girl out there. But, you know, my wife likes spaghetti squash.
I agree.
Oh, God.
I'm good. I'm good. If that's a spaghetti squash.
That's a real spaghetti.
It's a real spaghetti.
It's all American.
And it's like. Yeah, and he told me that about. Um. Halloween in the back.
Oh, I'm not sure. Do it like. In the next two months. And I want to take it off slowly and make sure.
Realistic.
She doesn't want to.
Oh, double.
You're right.
Fifty-two. Don't.
It's.
They're.
Bold.
That paint.
And I really think like. It's just.
They should all.
How is it? Yeah. Yeah. I want to.
So people system. Rest of your stuff.
So it's nine thirty. All those in so few please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fall meeting to her with everyone present. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. Just choose not to be recorded. You have the option. First item on the agenda this morning is we have Winnebago County Celebration of Life with the Proclamation of Cancer Awareness Month.
I was trying to figure out, you know, we've been coming here way over twenty years to make a proclamation. And we're so grateful. Last year, we were able to assist eighty-eight of your friends, family, and neighbors with our.
Wow.
Eighty-eight.
Yes, I'll stand here so the people online can hear you too. Just stand to the side here and kind of face like that.
Because the camera's down there.
Camera.
Oh. Okay.
And then they can hear better too.
Okay.
Well, they, one person today.
Well, we're Winnebago County Celebration of Life, and we started in nineteen ninety-eight. I'm sure you're all familiar with us. We're very proud of what we do. The almost every dollar we collect goes back into the community. We have two programs. You aren't active treatment of cancer. I'll shorten up that. We can give you five hundred dollars worth of food cards, fuel cards. We also continue, which is where we started with our free mammogram screening programs for non-insured and underinsured women. I think one reason our numbers were up last year, I think word is spreading horrifically about us. We had eighty-eight applications coming in and we were able to assist everybody. And so, yeah.
That's.
We. We do our job because of the kind donations and the support that that we get. We're very, very, very proud of this community. And what we do.
Just to add to what was saying, you know, yes, we are proud to help any people, although we wish we could eradicate cancer from the. Born.
Yes.
While we all do. Yeah. While we do to help. Winnebago County residents and those of.
Yes. Yes. We're, we're very, we're, we just really glow about what we can do and the number of people we help. It's actually in the thousands of numbers.
And I guess when he adds up when you're going for.
It does. It does. And we've been able to increase it because of donations coming in. We are doing our big fundraiser. We have the white sidewalks coming to the Hotel Winnebago November seventh. This is a big deal for us. And we, we are selling tickets. I have always have tickets, but Hotel Winnebago has tickets. And if anybody can come get tickets, consider it a donation. And it's a really fun way to support us. It, it's a real, real blessing what, what we do and enjoy ourselves doing that. We're so great.
Thank you for.
Yeah.
People online and the people who are, will see this afterwards. How do they get in touch with you?
Okay, we have a great website, winneshecol. We also are on Facebook. And we reply right away. We're good to answer questions. We also, our program is online, our applications. They are so simple. It's just a handful of questions. Just very, very simple to do, to get it sent in. Also, all your primary care people and decor have our information. We, we send information every year to all the area churches too, in case they get questions from their congregation. A lot of businesses are aware of us. And because we're kind of around a lot, they know how to get ahold of people on the board too. And the board is all listed every place. So we're very easy to get along with and we keep things very simple so we can help people.
Is it winneshecol.org or dot com?
Dot com.
Dot com. Winnebago col.
Yeah, the minute you put in Winnebago Celebration of Life, it pops up. But please use Winnebago because there are other celebrations of life. Please just put in Winnebago and you can, you can reach us.
And I assume there's a donate button on that website.
No, there's not.
Not yet.
There is an application. There is a, a mailing address and our information. So, yeah.
That's a good point, surely, to have that donate button. But for us right now, we just feel really important to get it worked out.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and so that's why we're going to anybody and everybody that we do have a conversation with, say, please, please consider us and.
Yeah.
Share my situation.
I doubt there's anybody in this room who hasn't had an experience firsthand with cancer in their family.
Nobody does. Nobody does. And we are so blessed because last year we had seventeen different events that we got to talk to, help with fundraisers because people care so much and it's local. So you're helping your, like I said, your friends, your neighbors and everybody. Just.
Been a lot of people like that. Ninety-nine percent of it goes right back.
Oh, yeah, we have.
That's the big.
We don't have an office. We not have paid employees.
We're all volunteers.
We're all volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
We, we have some print and we, we beg a lot for free.
Thank you very much, by the way.
We just hit coffee over that. I run them down. I happen to do so. Okay, would you like to read that?
Yeah. I'll go ahead and read it. The proclamation. We, the Winnebago County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five as Cancer Awareness Month. We encourage citizens, government agencies, private and corporate businesses, nonprofit organizations, and other interested groups to help increase awareness of what we can do to prevent, curtail, and to pay tribute to those who have had their lives impacted by this disease. Signed on this date, October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Someone wants to make a motion to.
I make October as a cancer awareness month.
Second. Motion is second for the proclamation of Cancer Awareness Month. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 You want us all to sign?
Yeah, please all sign. We all, we use this now on display when we go places. So you get that out there. And then we'd like to. Following the work of the Iowa Cancer Consortium to statewide research into our cancer rates in Iowa.
I saw the effort he worked.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We take.
Yeah, I'll do that first.
Would you want us all?
I don't know. Are you? Maybe.
Between the plies, maybe?
Yeah.
Do you want to hold?
Unless the clock is going to be distracted.
Sure. Dan.
Where would you like to stack?
I'm not good at this.
There's not really a.
Yeah. Yeah, please. To cover the.
I lose and then win.
Man and mugs.
Let's put the three in the middle.
Three in the middle? Yeah.
You're surround. You want to punch it up more?
We'll see your. If you, yeah, if you can, but no, I think that, I mean, that's great, I think. Um. All right, three, I'm gonna take one with, or two with this phone and then two with my camera. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. You might want to move your head a little that way. There you go.
Gotta watch this.
I was trying to hide.
Closer here. Three, two, one. And again. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. So much for the support.
I'm already gonna really get.
Everything you do in support of us, we appreciate it. So much. Thank you for being here. These are pictures. Support.
Yeah. Thanks.
Dan, that's yours.
You guys.
Thank you for all that work.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
For so many years. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. It's not just you.
Next item on the agenda, Michael Cuny, our county engineer. You have a few different things here. That's. Before I forget though, I'm gonna tell you. There was a sign down. We think it's sixty-six on W forty-two. Looks like someone went. So I don't know if the guys have seen it already this morning. Wasn't there yesterday.
That's a good. Hopefully the sign. Yeah, they, we had the paper for the new. System we have. Little bit. Jesus. Yeah. Um. We forgot. You find out the hard way.
Oh, it should.
Should be better now when it's.
That is humid.
Yeah. Um. I'm gonna start up. So Winnebago County is a finalist for the build grant. There's nothing new this week on that build grant. River Flatt Power Bridge Study Coordination. It will be coming here on October seventh and eighth this week. Bridge inspectors will be here to do biannual bridge inspections this week. Further, they're doing the covert and short span bridges as part of a once every five year covert and bridge inspection program. So we have five hundred and sixty structures that we administer and all the really short spans that get over, I won't say overlooked, but they get passed up on these inspections every two years. We still keep track of them and have our bridge inspectors go in and keep track of them for us. And we can make decisions off of those inspections once, once they're done with those. So kind of a big week that way for us. But they'll, they'll be busy in the, look out for them on the roads this week.
So how many inspectors is that in?
I don't know what the crew's gonna be, but there, it's gonna be, instead of the two or three that they have, typically it's gonna be, I'm gonna guess, four or five. It's gonna be. The, the inspections aren't quite as lengthy because we don't have to put it into a big database. So the only data that's stored is between the bridge inspector and the county. It's not gone up to the state or anything else. So there's a little bit less work to do that way. But it's still, the field work is still, you gotta be out on site. You gotta, in this case, the bridge inspector, you have a couple of structures that are new to the whole program, drawdown structures that have been put in the last five years. I wasn't here to locate them, so we, they gotta find them. So I done a little bit of that last week. Things like that. It's all new, so it's kind of, for me, it's a little bit exciting, but.
Now, we track all these in the GIS system?
Um. No, we don't track our bridge inspections through the GIS system. We do have our labeled bridges, the, for instance, the Pleasantview Bridge is three twenty. That, that's located there, but there. We have lettered names for some of the smaller structures that are not on our GIS system, and we don't really use the GIS system as the tool to keep track of things. We have the GIS system access our existing information that we already keep. It's a little bit of a, we don't use GIS to track it, but the GIS incorporates what we do track. Streamline passion. Um. So subdivision data, nothing new this week, nothing new on Corey Hill. Methadone construction is finished and we're still waiting for the seating to create the covenant. It's needed to finish up the project. Um.
The seating is down.
The seating is down. It's just, we have to have seventy percent cover. In some areas, we have seventy percent cover, other areas we don't. Whole site has to be seventy percent covered. And with the work that's going, there's tension. I might have to make a exception on this, but that's, it is still on the project. The detention call, detention pounds have been going in there. Covert work on A fourteen, East of Pass, but we've got the, the deepest of the culverts to get to install. That should be finished up this week. Um. I'll see over B thirty-two is coming, was completed on Thursday, two weeks ago. It's working itself. Finished what I hear. I was gonna go on a field trip after the meeting. I go get it myself.
It was really down last night already, so.
Okay, I've been, I've been getting, I've been getting some messaging, some insistent messaging, if you will, on, on that road.
I was in the intersection of it yesterday and he was holding down nowhere near as much loose and all.
Yeah.
Was, I wasn't able to attend the meeting to represent you at the, at the gathering at Fort on Wednesday night.
Yeah.
But I had Greg Bar to, you know, relay the information, so.
Okay, thank you.
I had, I had thrown my back out, so I was not.
Yeah.
Cheer.
Tuesdays are a little bit hard for me to get there, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Michael phone going off and the phone rings. You have to be the secretary.
Yeah. I. That's. The office staff, so I, I stayed put instead of going in and visiting some of these roads when I otherwise would have. Um. Dura Patcher is on A fourteen. It's about ready to move to W forty. Bridge three oh seven, nothing new this week. Uh, well, the exception being we do, we need to update our certified five-year plan. There's two changes in that effectively. One change is the change in the TVMS ID, which the original uh, plan for set by Lee before me. Um. It got taken off the five-year plan, so that when I came in, we put it on the five-year plan, I entered a new TVMS number. Um, and that ran afoul of the, what needed to happen to their database. All it is in that regard is is the change in TVMS numbers, what you're signing off on there. The other change that I had to make was Bridge three twenty, that project, we were aggressively trying to get it wet in two thousand. This will be twenty twenty-six. That is no longer possible on, based off of the way it's funded. DOT notified me that we can't have it as is, so I just moved it back to twenty twenty-seven. Everything else is the same.
Is that the Green Valley?
Pleasant.
Or Pleasant Valley?
Yes, Pleasant Valley. And we're still targeting the beginning of twenty twenty-seven calendar year for beginning of construction. Plans will be will be on a hundred percent worth of plans by the end of October. So everything's on schedule there. It's just because of the highway bridge program, and I'm not sure exactly why it just requires a long lead time for for DOT on that, on the weddings.
Would anyone like to take action on the changes to the five-year program?
I'm willing to approve changes to the five-year program.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the changes to the secondary Rose five-year program. All those in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. If she passes unanimously.
And then we'll have to sign, send that now up to the DOT.
You have many copies.
Okay.
Talking.
All right. Um, Bridge two oh eight E, vertical walls, barrel top, reported last week, as well as the outlet. And then the inlet and will be poured this week and that'll be the finish of the structural. Uh, backfill operations will begin shortly thereafter soon. It sets, probably two, three days after it sets. That one went right along. That's why we like bridges are. Pour. Box cover. On. Box. Once it gets done and it goes. Um. That being said, we, I think women, if you set time attractively, they'll be doing the, the table board, they're working on. Getting on the top. But I don't know what place to get the rules. They have an inquiry into residents and women. They let us know when you know everything. So. Um, one twenty-six NIPA clearances have been completed and that will likely be let in January. It's not been confirmed. Uh, and we still need to acquire the right of way, so. Frankville Road, letting will likely follow Bridge one twenty-six. Staff, B thirty-two is finished and focus on that. Annual report has been submitted to DOT. I got one more change is necessary. Thank you, Ben. And then I'll re-submit again. Um. Fuel bids were received. That was from last week, so. Camline, the Anne Strapping Roads on Tuesday, a couple weeks ago, the Sillings Stripe over Tenter County and the fog lines for the southwest quadrant were mostly done. And then I prepared quotes for B thirty-two and three hundred and fiftieth street to be done at the end of October. And we got a really good price from Vogel. It's eight cents per linear foot. For the whole county, we got seven cents per linear foot. Um. Camline, so this is a really good price at the end of the year, so I want to just that this is very positive, a little bit of mobilization to have. So eight cents per linear foot plus mobilization. Looking at about eight thousand bucks. It had done. Um, so we're very happy about that. And then the last order of business, more than a dozen applicants apply for frequent blade operator position. Um, and between staff and I, we recommend the higher breton tickets. So.
Move to approve the hiring of breton tickets. I guess I say it last name.
I think so.
I'll second that.
Does he local or? Yeah, he's.
Talmer area?
Yes, Talmer area and Southland. That's how I think of it.
Previous blade experience.
He has lots of different machinery experience, but doesn't have a whole lot of blade experience. So there wasn't a whole lot of blade experience, blade-ready applicants. Um. He, in his interview, we didn't interview him this round because we'd interviewed him prior. And he's a talking to him and to his his contacts. He's, he's a go-getter and. His contacts, he's, he's a go getter and doesn't. He's good with equipment and things like that, so we think that this is a good bit.
Probably okay though, because we interviewed him for a job in Oshin, he was one of the finalists.
Yeah, he's, he was a finalist last time as well, and we're very, very happy that he applied again, so.
Are you considering sending him to blade school and?
We would send him to blade school, um, just. As a policy, we send our most junior, um, three most junior light operators to the, to the. Uh, blade school annually, so he would, I think it's gonna be in May, um. We missed it this past year, um, but. That is something we will be looking this to do, but, so. Yes.
I did.
I second, okay. We have a motion and a second for the hires of. All those in favor, say aye. I don't know how you got that one to me.
Oh, yes, it's. Yes, um, and then I just want to guess one other thing, um, there's been. An abnormal amount of calls and emails about. Um, or three fifty, um, B th- B thirty two and Town Line, um. And I just kind of want to address a couple of them, I guess, I'll say publicly, um. I guess the first thing is, is we're not trying to close roads down during harvest season, it's not our goal, we have. Uh, this year, we have as much overtime as I've seen. Five years trying to get our work done, so we're, we're kind of hamstrung by. How much work we can go at any given time. Um, on, on B thirty two, I think it's just a, it was a shock with the. The road and that, that tends to happen with these out of seals, on three fiftieth. Um, that road. The last traffic count that we had was when Northwood Schools was still there. I'm awaiting this data that's supposed to be coming out, uh, within the next month or so. I'm concerned that the, the road count there is gonna put that, uh, less than a lot of our gravel roads. So I don't really want to, I'm trying to make that, keep that a paved road. And keep it economical as I possibly can, so that's, that is what I'm fighting on three fiftieth. And, um, you know, just with all the, you know, I'll call it Nesty Valley and the other. Endeavors that we've had trying to get pipe in and on B thirty two and everything else. This is the only time we, we could have done three fiftieth, um. One of the, one of the. The other project that, um. Is the, uh, Town Line Road, we were applying for rock on it. Today, due to the rain, um. It is making me question. How to make that process better, um, ideally, we would have just bladed it smooth now that it's raining. And it should be set as we were past that twenty eight K window. At the case, so, uh, we will be looking into what it is needing to be doing on that, so.
So a part that's bad on that road is the, still in that area that you put the permiside.
Correct.
Cause you only did that on that one section between the.
Well, right.
You didn't, I didn't know the complaints, I didn't know if they were on the other side west of the highway.
No, this is all, this is the permiside where I'm.
Okay.
Still getting complaints and I. You know, this is the pilot program, um. Interestingly, it's on the east side of the Town Line Road and I'm. Surprised at that because that is the one that finished out of all of those sections that we did that finished the best, so. I don't know what that means, I have to, I have to weigh that out a little bit, but it is something that we are looking at, so I, I don't wanna. Keep those discussions hidden, I'm trying to comment about them and, and. Yeah, the, the three fiftieth was. I got talked to this weekend about that, um, and so.
Three fifty, you have to switch road for the public.
Just the work of the old Northman School.
Yeah, it's.
I just sent you another.
Past the, it's past the center, as you had.
Pavement from Northwind to fifty.
And, and what we're doing there is patching the concrete, we're trying to be systematic about it, uh, we try to. What we're trying to do is, is do one side of the road so that. Most of the time, you can pass on the other side, but, but. I mean, we, one of the days, we were waiting two and a half hours for the concrete truck to show up, like, just, yeah. So you can keep things closed for when that type of a truck comes and.
Is that the one that was about twenty years ago was paved? I think, yeah, I think that was, other than that's. One going south and from Jackson that was part of a shovel ready. Uh, federal special funding, I think that was the last. County road that we paved from gravel.
I, that is not really in my recollection, um, I know. That patching on that road has been requested. Since I started, I mean, that's been, do something about this road, it's awful, um. It's just, what do you do, what do you do with it, because the ideal, if we're talking about dollars and cents thing, most likely it's. Best thing to do with, with that mean is to make it a gravel road. On a dollars and cents basis, not for traffic flow, not for level of service, but on a dollars and cents basis. Um, you know, roads like Metal Arc, um. Town Line, uh, White Tail, all these roads are likely to end up having substantially higher traffic counts. Than three fiftieth, and so, and how do you justify that, um? Just by, it's already there, right?
One point in time, that wasn't the case.
Correct.
It was brown.
So.
It was part of Dean Darling had this. Putting this grid where he wanted a hard service road every so many miles so that you could. Anyway, that was one of the last ones we did, I think, I remember.
I'd, I'd have to go back because that doesn't sound familiar and I think one of our employees, uh, actually did some patches about twenty years ago. So that's why I'm thinking that either the timing's off or, I, I don't know, it's.
Maybe I'm thinking of a different road.
I remember when that one got paved, so it's.
The other issue with that is, um. Water underneath the pavement, so it's keeping up with that. If we were to put something brand new in, we would be spending extra money on that brand new to, to. Tile and, and, and create, uh, a sub drainage probably throughout the.
From the dollars and cents versus traffic count perspective, you'd be better off pulling that up, crushing the. Yeah, and then putting gravel over the top.
I would seriously consider paving something like Metal Arc, um.
Before putting a lot of money into that one.
Right, that's, that's kind of where I'm sitting on this, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that I'm doing that, because that's not at all what I'm saying, what I'm saying is. I, there's only so much I can do on that road.
In the meantime, the email that came in today that we got.
Yes, that was that, it, I know, everything I talked.
So what he talked about was the dust, the safety of the gravel road that they're all having to take, because that's posed, when we have a situation, can we do any dust control? While you're construct, doing construction on the other road.
Um. The question becomes if we do that for this. And then we have to, we have to make enough policy, I mean, if, if, we had to treat every road fairly.
And you don't have a marked detour on this one, do you?
We don't have a marked detour because.
What other one would you be doing, it's what locals think is the shortest side.
Mark detour and that's because of construction, then.
A lot of times we do.
Require contractors to do that, so when we're doing it ourselves.
Funds available, yes, um, but I didn't. We do have a water truck, um, and, I mean, I'm more than, I mean, I'm more than happy to, to work with people on that, but I, I. I end up in this situation, you just controlled here, why I'm gonna do it here, I'm battling that nonstop.
Everybody's gonna call you.
One fifty fifth last.
I mean, it was just, it, it was like, when. It's just gravel roads are hazardous and it's. Just, just one really, why I want to keep three fiftieth paved, to be quite frank, I don't want. I don't want that gravel road, I mean, it's a night, it's nice to have that paved, even if it's not a good road.
Yeah, we had the same trouble with W fourteen when we were doing that, because we had so much dust going back down.
So. Yeah, it, I. It just, if I'm, you know, directed to, to put dust control on these roads, that's, you know. It's one less bridge that we're gonna get, I mean, that's, that's, it's enough money that we're taking out bridges and, and culverts that, that we're replacing. So, um, that's, that's the, the trade off, so I, I just want to, because I have been hammered with, with. Feedback from the public, I want to kind of bring those things up, the other one is Twin Springs Road, uh. I'm looking, I'll be looking at that today, um, I. I don't want to put too much money into, long story short, we have some property rights issues going on in there that I want to solve. Before I put a lot of effort into it, they have a very large culvert that needs to be replaced there. I'm trying to make sure that, that the funds that we go there are very minimal, so. Um, should hear about that, um. That is being looked at actively, and I head out after this and go, uh, work with the superintendent to. To come up with ideas on that, so.
Is the traffic count on W three fiftieth about half of what Metal Arc or, 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 uh?
Just a little study now.
The, the, the data from the study hasn't come out, um, Metal Arc's almost four hundred and the, the last traffic count for. Three fiftieth was, I want to say three hundred, so. Right. Yes, correct, so I, it'll be interesting to see what that tra- the D O T. Traffic count comes up, um, and, and then, I mean, the other, I mean. Austin South, you know, that's one that needs attention, uh, W forty two South Boston needs attention, um, and that's on our program. Middle Calmer, uh, W fourteen north of Brideway, uh.
That one, guy do anything like you're doing here now on three fifty, patches that are really bad.
Um, depends on, the, the issue like, uh, W fourteen north and is because they did. They did a lot of that patching.
Patching, yeah.
And they poured out so much and they have a differential, we're thinking, talking to the.
One's even and the other isn't, and it's just, it's not working.
So I don't.
Work together.
No, and, and so.
That's one of our more recent repavings too.
Yeah.
Then since I've been here and that.
Correct.
It's had issues from the get go.
Got expansive soils and, and.
And heavy equipment.
Yes, so.
Biggest part, they said when they poured, they dug out, quartered out from the beginning.
And, and not all of it.
Just those spots and so.
Couldn't get through, yeah.
We're not sure. Yeah, we're just not sure if that made it, if it made it a whole lot better, but we were trying to do this, trying to do. A hard, you know, a, a really thorough direction, but.
Turned me to worse.
I don't know about worse, because I.
Yeah.
But, so, some people have said that, I. Talking to office staff, I'm not sure that it's worse, but it, it helped.
Even taking pavement out of them spots and just gravel with that.
Well, if we're talking traffic counts.
Um, but I mean, just even some of them spots, it just.
Yeah.
Bad dips.
Some, they do some mud checking or something on that at one point too.
Uh, that I. I'm not sure about jacking, uh, usually you'd do that like over culvert, so. You wouldn't just, my jackal road typically.
I thought there was something to that.
But I, again, there might be something I don't know about, but I'm just saying that's. Typically do that on, uh, forwards and bridges, so I just want to bring that up and be public about that, all the concerns are. You know, and this is all the concerns, um, I guess the other thing in, in regards to. Timing, we had the flood, uh, all the flooding damage that our guys were occupied to just, you, just. We're, we're committed, so. Um, other than that's.
Great job.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. Think they are starting that project, no, I shouldn't.
The, the time we catch.
We're gonna do the one lane at a time.
Just send, just send, uh, we'll just follow the, the mobile planes then.
Okay. Yeah, he's doing that work. The, uh, estimate come in, the bid came and then eleven. Let's see, thirty, thirty by twenty four, I think I told you.
That's what you told it.
The county's size, portion of it, so, it all worked together.
Good.
If anybody wants to see the pictures of it, Mike's got them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't put them into this, but I'll hold it for this week, but I did have them last week.
We definitely showed it, something.
It'll be, it'll be much nicer.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. What's that? All right, ten ten, I have this lenient item on the agenda, the annual week commissioners' report.
The paths sit around there. Places this time when you.
Has a motion to approve.
I'd love to approve the week commissioners.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the annual weed commissioners' report, AKA Doug Group. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Most opposed, motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda?
The consent, I've got the Recorder's Monthly Report. Auditor's Quarterly Report. Uh, minutes and Highland General Store, the tobacco permit is changing names. Because the previous owner passed away, so we're just changing names on that, so it's name change on the tobacco.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Disposed. And sign, motion carries unanimously. Quick committee reports, historic commission meets on Saturday thirty here.
Six county meeting Thursday.
Six county meeting Thursday at the earth moving legacy center, is that the right name for it, in El Cater? And then five to seven o'clock Wednesday night is the community picnic open house for everybody in medical center. That's kind of all the fun.
See the new facility. And then, uh, Friday, the Trees for Kids Grant will take place here. Around eight thirty, they'll start, and be, different classes will be coming up from the fifth grade toward planting trees. Friday, so John Kraus from, uh, Conservation helped apply for the grant, and he's got in charge of ranging all of this, so. It'll be a fun day.
And Friday night, there's a Dvorak concert at the Saint Wenzel loss church. Where Dvorak used to play. And that'll be six o'clock on Friday, in, in Spillville at the Saint Wenzel loss church.
If you haven't been in that church, it's real, it's really pretty.
It's amazing.
And the acoustics are.
Or a piano, it's a piano recital from a well-known Czech pianist from Czechoslovakia. Being Dvorak's, it should be.
Wow.
Should be pretty, pretty nice event.
Friday, what time?
Six.
Six. It's already getting dark by then.
It is. About how many weeks until we get fall back?
We're still two months, two months away from the shortest day.
Wow.
So that means it's four months to get back where we're at.
Do you want to go home now?
All right, ten fifteen, next item on the agenda, Sean Snyder, emergency management, Krista Landrake, public health, room use discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Guess I'll pick it off here and I'll pass the baton over to Krista, um, first of all, thank you so much, uh, behalf of the commission. We want to thank the board supervisors for continued conversations. Last week, uh, Mr. Kelsey and. Mrs. Vermaes uh met with a couple of members of uh the commission out of that building, had a discussion with tour. Uh, that building does check a lot of the boxes, um, I could see. I could see some good things happening out of that building, uh, for example, uh, incident command trainings, incident command post, but we have. A large incident. Resource staging, just just the ability to grow at the four acres, uh, I have a lot of resources scattered throughout the county. Um, through proper budgeting, in the future, we could even build like cold storage or something out there. On that four acres to have all of. Emergency management resources under one, under one roof instead of relying on a lot of partner agencies. So there with that, there is a lot of uh, a lot of upside for that potential location. Now let's get into the unknowns before I turn it over to uh Krista here, so. The Doge report came out uh last uh Monday, the twenty ninth, I believe we go today. Nobody's seen that final report yet, um. Going off the midterm report, uh, PSAPS or dispatch centers were were discussed for some sort of regionalization. Now, public health was addressed. Emergency management's a low hanging fruit, it has been for the last few years, I could see maybe emergency manager being thrown into that uh final list. And then you you take those unknowns into the unknowns of legislative session beginning in January. Lot of unknowns with that, um. I've been lying to you if I looked at you right now and said I'll be around uh a year from now, who knows, uh, may be regionalized, I may be, uh. You know, it may not be a program here in the county as you know it now. So that affects the commission. That obviously affects dispatch, there's a lot of unknowns. That's the negative side of it, the. Look at it positive, what if we become the hub of some sort of regionalization? Right now, there in our current footprint, there just is not space to build either program under the emergency management umbrella, so. My recommendation, I think I was tasked to give you a recommendation would be if you guys are willing uh to table. The sale of the or sale of the building, let's get through uh legislation, so next spring we'll have a better idea of what the future holds. If nothing changes, uh, that's gonna be your decision to sell the building. If nothing changes and you want to look at potential growth or uh Winnebago County, we can certainly look at partnering and doing something with that building. Or maybe there's another something out there for emergency management, doesn't have to be that building, uh. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, but to me, you already own the building, you own the land, it's gotta be cheaper to do a smaller renovation than it would be to build. And buy a land, so that's my sales pitch to you guys. I'll turn it over to Krista for any thoughts on public health.
Yeah, so we are in the same situation with uh what we're calling alignment. They've not used the term regionalization for public health. And so what will happen with alignment is there will be a lead entity, so that is ideally a public health a agency. And we will be the contract holder for lots of different contracts. Yet as a local provider, we will be expected to still continue to provide all the public health services that we do. We know that legislation is currently being drafted this fall for discussion. Uh, this coming January, nobody knows what that looks like, that's all happening at the state level, so we're in the same boat as Sean, where we don't know what this looks like yet. Um, so yes, the Doge report came out, um, alignment was already in the discussion. Without Doge even getting involved, so. Fiscally, this makes a lot of sense. Um, physically, it's it's going to be a little bit of a change for us, right? So we're used to things happening in Decorah and being co-located with other services. While Sean and I have talked for several years, wouldn't it be nice if we could somehow be co-located to share some of our resources because we do talk a lot of the same language? It's just never worked. You know, he's been in a different building, we've been in a different building. This would be an ideal situation where we actually could bring up some different trainings. Um, that would benefit both of us and actually the entire county. Uh, so it is a little bit of an inconvenience, if you will, to be outside of town, but it is more centrally located. And so with this alignment process, again, we end up looking like a hub as well. And knowing some of the different things that are happening across the state. For us pretty well to to be that hub. Um, the state looks to us for different services that we can provide, would you consider offering this service, hey, what about this? Well, yeah, we're willing to do that, but that makes us a hub. And so that's where some of that alignment really falls into play too. And so it does make sense to hold off and wait and see what legislation happens. We know that nothing is going to take effect July first, twenty twenty six. That's just unrealistic. The earliest we would see anything happening would be July first, twenty twenty seven, probably more into twenty twenty eight. So that gives us time to go ahead and get positioned. To be that hub for all of our respective entities that we need to do. So, yeah, there there's definitely advantages, and so. We just have to kind of sit on those advantages, um, but it is, it is a positive move there.
Yeah, and again, we're talking a lot of unknowns, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions you guys may have, but uh. What is at this point?
What about the whole? City of Decorah new. Office facilities and where it is, you know, I see Dan's on the on the TV too, but or on the online too, but. Are your current offices in the spotlight of something that's going away or re getting replaced or something, you know?
Well, yeah, and I don't, I can't, I don't want to speak for the city of Decorah, but I know, so there's, there's like. There's multiple scenarios all at play right now, uh, building's one of them. What happens to the city of Decorah, uh, I believe that it's on the uh November fourth ballot, uh, so that will kind of dictate what potentially might happen down there. Uh, so there could be something for the sheriff's office and emergency management down there. Uh, unfortunately, that that doesn't do anything for public health situation, um, so.
And you still have the problem that you're sitting right next to the river.
That's uh, yes, that makes my Sean's head explode on that basis, yes, uh. Um, so yeah, there there is a potential, um. Just don't know what that is, it looks, a lot can, we'll know a lot November fourth.
And that scenario would not. Afford storage.
Correct, there's, that that improves the office location, uh, or space, I should say, not location, uh. Potentially, we could carve out something uh. Uh, for like a training room or something along those lines, but that doesn't allow us to bring res- resources or equipment.
Probably would be worse if they, especially if they build a new fire station building, you can have less room there.
That's correct.
Rather than more.
You're exactly correct, if if you know the potential area that they're looking at, that that will take up the. Uh, what available space there is, so.
And I was actually down in the emergency operations center, which was in the law enforcement center, um, back in the two thousand eight flood. And some of you may have been volunteers actually sandbagging us in. That was a little unnerving. Um, because we could see where the water was and, you know, you didn't want to hook up that dike and you're just like, okay, if that goes, so would we? It was so thin, yes, yeah, yeah, so. A different site away from the river. Is beneficial there too.
I, my wife always likes to joke, I have like the worst luck ever, you know, I'm either, I'm either three months early or six months late to the party, it seems like, and that's kind of where it seems like we're at here, you know, we've got this potential building. Uh, but we need about six months to get us through legislation. And I've said from from day one, I support you guys' decision, whatever you want to go, I'm not looking to spend good money on a bad investment, I just, I was tasked with giving you what the potential could be, and that's what I want to do.
I like the idea personally of public health. More centrally located so that the southern half of the county, where there's a lot of people. It's easier for them to get to than coming into town and going up to the third floor of an old building. Now, there will have to be a lot of education to direct people where that is.
Yeah.
Because uh, when it was the current building, uh, we would send people up there, oh, you need to go to DHS to fill out your your application, or where is that? And so people did not know where that building was, even when they blew sign on the on the road. So education is a key moment there.
We were showing the building, we had several people show up looking for the DHS there. Couldn't figure out how to find the new location, so education.
Location, location, location is is always an issue, we understand that, Isaac.
Of course, I remember when I. They went public health was down downstairs at the courthouse, so, you know.
Did it then, it was hard.
Are you saying Ben is old, so you're.
Yes.
Remind us, what are we paying right now for rent for public health per year?
Not quite forty thousand, but a little, little under that.
Little under forty thousand.
Thirty seven.
Yeah.
How many, how many places do you have things in storage around the county right now?
I'm fortunate right now, like I've got good partnerships with city of Fort Atkinson, city of Spillville, uh, soon to be city of Decorah. What's that?
Yeah, Castellano.
Uh, it used to have uh the sandbagging machine actually staged in Castellano. Uh, but that was through the secondary roads, we moved it to the city of Spillville. And ev- every plot, every place, I want to be cautious now I say this, every place that I have stuff is not charging me any rent, and they are doing the maintenance on the equipment for me. So that is a valued partnership in my opinion, but. Uh, city of Spillville, for example, I don't know when Fred is going to retire, um, and if there's a changeover in elected leadership, you know, maybe that would change. Uh, the sandbagging machine for if we're speaking of in the city of Spillville, that's an asset that I don't want to just leave set outside because it'll rust and. The moments won't work when we need it, so. I've been fortunate where I can beg, borrow and steal for ten years of everywhere I've got.
That's your, your big equipment, I mean, you've got. Equipment, other things, whether it's PPE or heavy bags or things stored at public health and different color planes too, it's literally scattered throughout the county.
And you have storage units you're renting?
We have one storage unit that we rent, uh, it's down like where Wassy Co. News was. Um, and so having a little storage would be great.
But that too will.
Correct.
Right next to drive on.
And the county has one out at Freeport, I mean, if we decide to keep the building. Maybe we can consolidate what's in those storage units into storage out there rather than.
Because we know we have our floods.
Yeah. Yeah, well, luckily, our yearly expense out that building was roughly twenty five plus thousand a year too. Just to keep it better expenses where.
Well, when at this stage.
Yearly. What it costs is to keep, just upkeep.
Per year.
Per year was twenty five, that was without maintenance.
It was, if that was, there was like eight hundred a month, just because they had a special type of phone line there when the. When the DHS was there that we wouldn't have, but. We still have, there's no internet there, so you're gonna have some other thing you're gonna have to deal with, I mean, we're.
That was roughly a hundred thousand, I think, the cost to bring that in. To bring fiber up there, uh, John Lukey has an idea, so that, so bringing the fiber to the building is dependent on moving dispatch, and I don't. Think that is a financial, a wise financial decision at this point. Um, I think leave it where it is unless we're forced to regionalize or something along those lines. Uh, John Lukey has an idea where we could actually get it off of the the tower over there on Twin Springs Road, so we wouldn't have to do that, but. Again, there's a lot of what ifs, I'd love to. Continue the conversation with you guys and we can build out a plan, I I'm a planner by nature, right, so I'd love to have more conversations with you guys, instead of being reactive to where. Come March, all of a sudden Sean has to do something, I'd like to have continued conversations and we can talk about. You know, I see this as maybe like three phases of, first phase is getting it habitable. Uh, second phase is maybe doing some upgrades uh to where we can reduce those monthly costs. To utilities and third phase is maybe we do fiber or something like that where we can have. A backup dispatch center if we needed the floods. Or or if it works to regionalize, you know, so I just want to stress, like, I don't see us dumping a bunch of money in right away, but obviously there would have to be some expense to get it. Habitable out there.
I think one thing you said that stood out to me is, um, this is already a county asset. That could be utilized by two separate county entities right now in a shared space. And we, it it is currently an asset to go buy land and build a new building. It.
We have one free for.
There's no comparison.
We wouldn't have to buy land to build. We'd have to go on Freeport and build there.
No, but you still have to build even if we have the land.
Right.
We still got to build out here if you want to put cold storage.
That's cheap, yeah. Cheap bill.
Well, yeah, that's what you do there, just some offices. Instead of. Because we got, we. The dollar amount we could get for the land, plus you figure it's going to cost. You'd be three to four hundred thousand if you're going to go in there and renovate that, because. You're going to get rid of that heat heating system, that's going to have to go. All new windows, doors.
Fine with the heat.
You're gonna have to tear the sheet rock out of there, the whole basement's going to have to be sheet rocked. Yeah. It's a total renovation.
Yeah, I don't see it that way, but.
That's my opinion, I've I've been out there a hundred times.
You might both, I I look at it differently as.
That heat system.
Lifted it differently too, I think it's very doable.
Well, I'll disclose it by saying this, I've been in this job ten years, this is the closest the commission and the supervisor have ever come to doing something, so I want to. Want to leave on a good note saying thank you uh for even entertaining the idea. Um, it's one of those things, until we have a major incident, uh. It's hard to put a price on the value of having. A place to uh to bring elected officials in and and do the work that's going to be needed, so thank you again.
We appreciate your long-term vision on this, both of you.
And you all like this work.
And that is what you said before in other conversations in the last four and a half years is. You're in a hard place as the emergency management because you're dealing with people saying, well, what if, what if? We know things are going to happen, we don't know when they're going to happen, but we know they will. So I thank you for trying to get us in a position that we're better qualified and better set to deal with that.
Yeah. What is, you know, costs money and money's tight, so that's that's a hard, it's a hard sell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Up next. Listen to your.
Thank you for coming.
For the sale of highway fifty two property discussion.
Move to go into. Close session.
I'll second that.
The motion is second, go away, close session for the sale of highway fifty two property discussion authorized under Iowa forty twenty one five. One J, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you pause, they're signed. If you just have a sleep pass.
I'll stop recording the meeting.
You're the, you're gonna pause the recording and uh meeting.
I turned off and turned back because I.
Okay, just to. Just recap that, yeah. All that moved, Vermaes seconded to open the session again, that was unanimous, and now. All that moved and Vermaes seconded. To cancel the public hearing on the sale of the property and reject all the bids we've received.
At this time.
At this time.
Oh, I think you just. It is, it's canceled.
All right, any further discussion? Alright, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was full, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I'll just note in the minutes that you'll continue uh continue investigating other options for land and building.
So your use.
Motion to adjourn.
So I guess.
Motion second for adjournment. Say aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.
I needed to stand it up and stretch. Well, it's better, I'll tell you, by far better. I could get up out of a chair.
I see I'm a fool.
Wednesday afternoon. That's what you, when you bend over and and twist at the same time, it's not a wise move, you know what that means? I have now determined improvement beyond a shadow of doubt, the men should not mop floors.
I will agree with you.
I don't know if you agree with me.
How many board members are there?
There is one, so you can turn it off. Thank you.